Good evening and welcome. This is the August 18th, 2025, meeting of the school committee. Call a meeting to order 5:07. The meeting is being both audio and video recorded this evening, and I would ask that folks please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you all, and I would ask for a roll call. Samantha, if you can start, please.
Samantha Valak.
Pamela Blair, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Antonella Rochelle.
Samantha, Superintendent of Schools.
Henry Thompson.
William Strother.
Carrie Josavsky.
And would like, oh yeah, two of my two.
Amy Delenta.
And Heather Brown, Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning.
Thank you, Amy and Heather, and special welcome to Carrie today, our newest school committee member recently appointed.
Thank you for joining us, Carrie. Look forward to meetings ahead.
Okay, I have some meeting minutes for approval. I've obtained a motion, please.
Motion to approve the June 23rd, 2025 executive session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Antonella. Second. Second by William. Discussion. Carrie, you can with.
I was gonna ask you.
When you get the chance. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. And one abstention, so four zero one. Next up.
Make a motion to approve the June 23rd, 2025 regular session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Antonella. Second by William. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And abstention. Four zero one.
Like to make a motion to approve the June 24th, 2025 regular session meeting minute.
Motion made by Antonella. Second by William. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. And one abstention. Four zero one again, Samantha. Thank you for those minutes. Committee and subcommittee communications, Antonella, would you like to start?
I don't have anything at this time.
Easy enough. William.
I had nothing at this time.
Carrie, do you have anything you'd like?
I do not. I have committees at this time.
Yeah, at any point. So usually we will give an update on subcommittees that we've met since the last meeting or events that we've gone to or such. So Amy, anything?
Nothing today. Thank you.
Great. Okay, opportunity for visitors to address the committee. Seeing none tonight, we will move right along. And we are into the presentations. We have information regarding the superintendent search. And thus, joining us tonight, Tracy Novick from the MASC. Thank you for coming today.
Sure. Thank you for having me. So good evening to all of you, both here and online. My name is Tracy Novick, and I am the Field Director from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. I usually say Central Massachusetts, but you all should know that technically my realm goes as far as the river. And thus, I am here with you this evening. My presentation for you this evening is really in two parts. Because the first thing as your field director that I think is most important is that you're really solidly grounded in sort of what does it mean to appoint a superintendent and what is the authority of the school committee in doing so? And then, at the request that you had made, I have some information about MASC conducting a superintendent search. So we'll do the first part first, so that you, you know, my primary responsibility to you as your field director is always to make sure that you have all the information you need to make good decisions. And then, very much secondary is the question of how you then end up deciding to conduct the search, which is entirely under your purview. So if this seems like it's divided in half, it really very much is, and that's intentional. And by the way, please interrupt me at any point. I want you to feel like solid in what we're talking about tonight. So we can do the next slide. So most of you have probably seen this passage before. This is Mass General Law, Chapter 71, Section 37, which is, you know, what I speak of as the elevator speech version of what school committees in Massachusetts do. So right there in bold, one of your primary responsibilities is to select and terminate the superintendent. You know, that also includes evaluation. So it's very much under your purview. Just to speak a little bit more about that next slide. Really, the two things that you absolutely have to do in appointing a superintendent in Massachusetts is you have to appoint somebody who either already has licensure as a superintendent in Massachusetts or can attain licensure as a superintendent in Massachusetts. And then, the second thing that you have to do is you have to appoint the superintendent in a properly posted public meeting by majority vote of the school committee. And that is it. So that's really an important thing for you all to understand, because obviously there are lots of other things you can choose to do. But it's important for you to know that that is, those are choices that you, as the school committee, make. They're not things that you are required to do. As far as the law is concerned, these two things are the things that you have to do. Next slide. So with the opening of a superintendency, there's really, there's sort of two paths, and then one of the paths divides. So the first choice you have to make is that in many cases in school districts in Massachusetts, there is a bench, so to speak, right? There's somebody who has been, who has served in the district for a longer period of time, who perhaps is interested in attaining the superintendency, who has a great deal of trust in the school committee. Some districts have multiple people like this, depending on the size of the district. And then, one of the questions we're asked is, can we simply move to a point? And the answer to that is, yes, you can, as long as you do the other two things, right? Is that person someone who either has a license as superintendent, many people who are in other positions in school districts do, and do it in a properly posted meeting by majority vote of the school committee? So important thing to know is that that absolutely is an option that is before every school committee. If that is something that you actually have available to you. And again, not every committee does. Not every district is of that size. There's administrative turnover. Sometimes there are people who are perfectly happy in central leadership, but don't actually really ever want to be superintendent. And that's, you know, great too, because there's lots of important jobs that are in central administration that aren't the superintendent too. If however you choose not to do that, you would be choosing to move forward with a search. And you can do that also even if you have a strong internal candidate. Sometimes districts say, yeah, but we really want to see who else is out there, or we want to, you know, show that this person really is that strong, that they're our best option. Those are options you have available. Again, entirely up to you as the school committee. Regardless, you can then move forward with a search. If you choose to move forward with a search, you then have this path divide. And you can choose to do one of two things. School committees in Massachusetts can absolutely conduct their own search, depending on the kinds of strengths you have on the committee, depending on what kinds of experiences you have in the committee. Sometimes you feel comfortable doing it with the, some of the capacities that are in the school district, entirely something that's available to you. And regardless of what choices you make, let me state at this point, from here on out, one of the things that you have by virtue of being a member of the association is that we give technical assistance, which is you can call us up and say, you know, can you help us with phrasing? Can you help us with putting a survey together? Can you tell us a little bit more about what the field looks like? What are some good interview questions? All of those kinds of things. It's part of our job. We do it. You pay us dues already. That's part of what you get with membership. You absolutely can do that. So that's something that you can choose to do. You then also can choose to have contracted assistance. That's something that we do, but that's not, we're not the only people who do. There are other groups in Massachusetts that provide staffing for a search on behalf of the school committee. The thing to remember is that if you contract with someone, it still is your decision. It's still your job to select the superintendent. The authority always stays with the school committee. And really, it's about things like capacity, about making sure that people and times and meetings and paperwork and so forth and all of that get lined up as they should. In some cases, there's a question of level of experience with selection processes, what the field looks like, what kinds of things are best practices in terms of things like search committees and interview questions and all of that kind of stuff. Those are things that really any search, any search organization should be bringing to the table. Okay, next slide. So I want to stop there, because that's the sort of, as your field director, here are the things you should know part. Any questions on that?
You know how often school committees choose not to hire consultants and just do it internally? Is that common?
If they're going to do a cer, we used to say a third, a third, a third, and I don't think that's actually true anymore. I've been doing this for about 10 years. So it's getting much more rare. And I think some of it is that maybe there's two things. I think we have fewer people on school committee who are, who aren't, don't have a full-time professional job. So I think that might have been easier if there were a couple of people on school committee who were doing it, who were, you know, maybe they were raising families, or maybe they were retired, or maybe that like, and they actually maybe had some time during the day to be able to manage things and that sort of thing. We're seeing less of that. And I think the other thing is that maybe more school committees are getting. I think there's a greater wish for maybe professionalism in something that's really your most important appointment. And so really, I think that some committees are saying, this is something where if there's people who do this as part of their job, and we feel that we have the capacity to be able to bring somebody on to assist us with that, we'd like to do that so that we're presenting the district in the best means as possible.
Yeah, and we did use MASC last time. When we hired Gordon, we had my friend Pat Carrera.
Yes.
Yeah, it was great.
Thought it was a pretty good process.
We missed that. It was reflexive when it was, I mean, we, we, unfortunately, I miss Pat. We lost Pat a number of years ago. But, you know, when it, when it reflects well that like, this actually worked out really well last time, so maybe we should do that again.
And how many years, Gordon?
Seven.
My sixteenth year.
Sixteen.
Remark. It's wonderful.
Right?
Yeah.
That's wonderful.
It's a team effort. If you don't have a good school committee.
I was gonna say, it has to be.
Challenging to stay in a superintendent's role.
William?
Couple of questions. Well, one cost. Is there, if we actually contract, is there a cost?
So why don't I, can I hold that part until I do the next part?
Absolutely.
Okay, any questions about sort of general process first? Because I'm happy to take that.
So the other part of the question was more around, if you, you know, we witnessed with Springfield. So we were, you know, intently involved in that, you know, from the, from afar.
Yes.
Are you involved in every aspect of, if we were to contract you, are you involved in every aspect of it from the interview process to the actual being in the room when the questions are being designed and everything like that?
The short answer is yes. The longer answer is that if I end up juggling a ton of searches, you may get one of my colleagues. Now, looking at my fall so far, that isn't the case. You would actually have me for sure. Yes.
Are we ahead of the schedule per se?
You're, you're right on track. For my fall searches, I really like to launch them at the beginning of the school. I sometimes have, have school districts that come to me like at the end of the previous year. And my answer is, okay, but the first thing you're going to want to do is get a whole bunch of community feedback. And like, I, I think that schools are really important, but nobody is thinking about this in July, except for maybe the superintendent. So sending out like a parent survey in July is like a fool's errand, right? So I really like to launch my fall searches. So the other search, I'll just tell you that I already am contracted to do is Berlin Boylston out on 495. And so part of what I'm doing is like their, their opening day with their teachers. I'm actually going in and doing staff input right away. We're sending out the survey as part of all of the back-to-school material, like, hey, it's back to school, and the school committee is doing a search, please fill out the survey. Trying to get in front of things like their PTOs and that sort of thing, like at their first meeting. And that means that then as you're getting into, you know, September, you're starting to post October, you're starting to get applications, and then you're into doing the semifinalists and so forth section once you're getting into like November. Well, actually, something I should pass around is I have two things for you in terms of that are specific to us. I'll just hand both of them to you.
So you conduct, you would do all the surveys. Will we get to see any of the feedback?
So yes, so when I walk through this section, and that will, part of those questions will actually be answered. So because I admire people who want to talk money right away, the answer to how much does it cost to contract with MASC is $11,500. That no longer includes expenses. The only thing that, as a separate expense, the only thing that would be additional is if for some reason you decided you wanted to do advertising in like Education Week or the Boston Globe or something like that, that would be something where it would be an additional cost. Now, I will tell you right up front that we just don't actually recommend that, because frankly, nobody's like. But I, you know, it's your money, it's your decision, it's your search. If you want to do that, you could do that. It would be up to you.
It includes everything at this point.
We used to pull, we used to pull out expenses, which mostly was mileage, and we don't do that anymore. So, so why would you have MASC do your search? If you hit the, this is the one fancy slide. So the answer to your question is that, as I said, we already, we work, we're the Massachusetts Association for School Committees. The reason MASC exists is for school committees. We were actually created as an organization by school committees that wanted to have a statewide organization. The only reason we do superintendent searches is because school committees hire superintendents. All of us who are, who work for the association in the field have been on school committees. Most of us have been through, I think all of us, have all of us been through superintendent searches? I think all of us have been through superintendent searches on our local school committees. And as far as we're concerned, you are the hiring authority, so we need to make sure that you have what you need to do a thorough and legal and positive process all the way across. That isn't the case of most organizations you would contract with. You, in some cases, it's kind of more that they're working for applicants. And in all other cases, they don't have the same breadth of experience from the school committee side of the equation. So, next slide. So we, as I said, the, when it comes to the search, the field director, your local field director is really the one who is doing, who is doing the groundwork. I don't want to say that we're the ones who are doing the search, because it's really the school committee is doing that. But when it comes to gathering all of the information, putting the survey together, doing, gathering input from staff, from central office, from parents, from students, usually I think that's really important, then what I would do, what we do with all that information to answer your question is that I bring that back to you in a composite report. Because at the same time, the survey's in the field, I'm also doing these public input sessions, both online and in person, if that's what you would prefer. And I think it's really important to gather all of that information and present it to you in a, in a complete report that says, here is what the district says about itself, so to speak. And here is what the district says that they would like to see in future leadership. And then, accompanying that, I give to you my recommendations for what, how you should be describing the position. Now, a superintendency, on one hand, is a superintendency. They all have the same checklist from the department, right? They'll have the same description under Mass General Law of what their job is. But the same token, what you're looking for is the superintendent for East Long Meadow for now, as opposed to a different town for another time. And those, that's really the part that is specific to your search. And what I offer you from the information that I have gathered is my recommendation to you as to how you should essentially describe that. Now, that is a recommendation. That's entirely up to you. You then take that in a public meeting, you look through it, you discuss it, you deliberate it, you change it, you edit it, you add to it, you do whatever you want to. That goes together in a brochure. The other thing that I would, would be asking for, not only from you all, but also from central office, is we look for a whole bunch of descriptions of the district. So it's everything from enrollment to demographics to budget to how many of which position you have. I ask for the most beautiful pictures you have of your buildings, grounds, town, everything else, and also a description both of the town and of the school district. We put that all together. Used to be that we would mail it. Again, not really what people are looking for anymore. So it goes out to a list that we continue to compile and add to, which is essentially people who are interested in superintendent positions in Massachusetts. There's 600 people who are on that. It also goes on our website, and also goes on all of our social media. It goes on LinkedIn. Not all of our social media. People don't look for this on Facebook. It goes on LinkedIn. It goes on the microblogging sites, Threads, Blue Sky, and Twitter. It will, depending, this is up to you, we can also share it with NASS, which is the National Association of Superintendent Searches. We are, as superintendent searchers, part of that national network, and then it would go out to, I think it's 43 states across the country. That part is up to you too. It doesn't cost more. It's just another email for me to send if it's something you're interested in. Then to continue to answer your question in terms of then what happens and what do I do? The applications actually come to us. Applications for a superintendent search are confidential, unless you decide otherwise and decide to do the whole thing in public. Our strong recommendation is always not to do that. There is an exception in Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, which is the open meeting law, which allows for the first round of a search like this to be conducted confidentially. The reason you do that is all of these people have jobs, and if you do it in public, you will not get the same quality and caliber of applicant. So applications that are confidential, they come to us in the office. We make sure they're complete. They have all the parts that you need. Our recommendation usually is that you then have a search committee which does the first round. That can include members of the committee if you wish. It would have to be a non-quorum member of the committee. Does not have to. You can just simply have community members do it. Make recommendations in terms of there being people in central administration, teachers, parents. Strongly recommend students can be community members and so forth. They do a first, they get all of the applications. They do a first review of the applications, decide who to bring in for first-round interviews. Those are done in executive session. They're called semifinalist interviews. They then, still in executive session, deliberate those people, and then they will make a recommendation to you as to your finalists. And at that point, everything then becomes public again. So their recommendations to you as to the finalists are public. That is public information. Those applicants have agreed that this will, that they will go public and become finalists, so they've already done the homework they need to in terms of that. And then, you will bring them in here for a visit to the district. I also recommend that they have a meet and greet as part of that. I recommend that members of the school committee go and visit their home districts. That's again, a non-quorum during the day kind of thing, and I try to give you lots of lead time so that you can make what arrangements you need to, and I know some people have various capacity for that.
Tracy, you said non-quorum. Sorry to interrupt. You said now, is there an opportunity for all school committee members to make that visit though, or can it only be non-quorum?
It should be non-quorum, because it's just way too easy to fall into deliberation, in which case it would be an open meeting law violation. And I will say, as somebody who schedules these, I usually am scrambling enough to just actually have non-quorum. I would be surprised if I could actually get the full school committee together to go to a site visit.
The non-quorum doesn't have to be the same people?
It does not. And in fact, one of the things I recommend, if you can manage it, is to sort of give everybody a chance to go somewhere and report back. I think that's really valuable to your deliberation. Final step to your deliberation is having public interviews. Those are posted. They're in an open meeting. Anyone can attend. We, I will work with you ahead of time to develop your interview questions, just as I did with the search committee. And you then have your public interview. You deliberate in public session. You choose your superintendent. We, our job is not done on our end until you have a signed contract with the superintendent. So if there's information that you need from us or any support you need from us through negotiations, obviously you'll be working with your legal counsel on that. But we also are here for support on that. And I think I should probably do the next slide. So that's pretty much what I just talked through. You can't really read that anyway, but that sort of gives a general idea of what the phases are. It's probably too small to see. But you also have that in front of you in terms of the two-pager, which talks through sort of what the steps are in terms of the sort of creating the profile, actual posting and recruitment of candidates, and then doing the first round screening, the sending things then forward to you, and then you actually having the appointment. Next slide.
Is there a amount of finalists that can get put through?
Um, in terms of, so on the high end, there is no limit. On the low end, what I always tell the search committee is this. I'm going to require you to put forward at least three, because if you put forward two, the first question I ask them when I call them is, do you accept the position of finalist? And if they say no, you then have one, and you have to restart the search, because you can't select a superintendent in executive session, which essentially is what would have happened. So that is, that's my line to them to avoid that happening to you. That's not what the law says. That's my heading off. Like, I, I often think that part of my job is to sort of try to imagine worst-case scenarios and avoid, try to steer people to avoid them happening, and that would be one of them.
When you meet with the public to do surveys or anything like that, are we able to attend that? Or is it just you and?
I usually recommend you don't, and here is why. If they wanted to tell you something as their school committee, they already would have. And I find that it works better. I mean, I will say, for example, the same thing to principals and central administration when I talk to the teachers of, can I just have the teachers? When I talk to central administration, can I just have, you know, because, I mean, who am I? I've come from out of town. I don't live here. And the joke that I make is I take, when I'm doing with a big group, I take input on sticky notes, and I say, look, I don't recognize your handwriting. You know, all of these notes are going home with me. I don't know who wrote what. Please be as honest as possible. So I find it's useful, you know, I, I work for you. It's your search. But I find it's useful if you cannot go to those, only because you tend to put a certain cast on the, the input that's gotten. All right. Yes. So again, as I'm saying, as I said, while there's sort of a standard, you know, cycle that we go through in terms of how this works, everything from when do we start to when do we end, to how long do we leave things open, to what does the position profile look like, to who's on your search committee, that's all up to you. And that's entirely under your purview and for you to decide. So, you know, we have plenty of recommendations based on our experiences. I'll always share those with you as I have them. But at the end of the day, it's your search, and it's your district, and it's your superintendent that you're going to end up with. So we want to make sure that that is all, you know, hitting all of what you're looking for as along the way.
I think we were 10 or 12 on the first committee last time. Does that sound about a right target?
I start to get a little antsy when we start getting up around 13, 14, just because it ends up being too many people in the room. And it's, it gets harder to manage. And by manage, I don't mean manage like through the process. I mean, manage through, can we have a deliberation that actually is a deliberation? Yes.
That's for the first round.
Correct.
Yes.
So based on your experience with, with these 10-plus years of experience doing this, on a district like this, what's the, what's the number of candidates you generally get? I know only so many years people come into this.
Yeah, and it also varies by year. And I would say that's the one disadvantage of the fall searches is we're doing a spring search. I can say, well, here's what we were seeing in the fall. So I mean, what I will say to you is this, and this first part is not telling you anything that you don't already know. Yours is not a district that's in crisis. Yours is not a district that's, you know, like making headlines in sort of, you know, scary ways. You're not in, you know, budget terrible, terrible circumstances. You've already got a building project well underway. It's already been accepted. So those kinds of things are very attractive. You're not going to be in competition with Eastern Massachusetts, right? You might have some people who are thinking that they might want it, when I, I mean, it always sounds a little bit like I'm sort of making a nice joke when I say lots of pretty pictures, but there are people who sort of think about what kind of town they want to be in, what kind of, what kind of surroundings they want to be in. I'm an absolute, you know, pro outside of 495 person myself. I grew up in central Massachusetts, lived there all my life. Actually, I spent my first four years in West Springfield and Agawam. So I, you know, I'm always like, let's play up the like, you're not living in metro Boston anymore kind of aspect. I think that matters a lot. I think we are seeing, and by the way, I'm not avoiding your question. I'm sort of thinking through what kinds of aspects there are. We, we did see a kind of a weird kind of almost freeze immediately coming out of the school closures of the pandemic, where a lot of assistant superintendents and so forth just kind of stayed put and didn't make the next jump. Understandable. We seem to be through that at this point. So I would expect that you're going to, to see at least 12 or 15 applicants. You may go as high as 20, although I don't want to commit to, to that for sure. And the other sort of really random aspect is, I mean, first of all, I don't need to tell you that you're really close to Connecticut. We are seeing more cross-New England applications than we used to, even some coming over from New York. And we, we also still are seeing some, I don't know if you saw it, there was this phenomenon they talked about when sort of, you know, people were kind of reevaluating their lives during COVID, of people talking about, where do I want to actually really be and am I near family? Massachusetts is a net exporter of educators. We saw a number of superintendents come sort of back to Massachusetts, who either were from here or they had actually been educated here and were, and as they sort of thought through things, they said, hey, wait a minute, you know, actually, I really want to be working in Massachusetts. And that's, I mean, that makes for a lovely headline, but it was something that kind of took us by surprise when we started getting these applications from like these other states in the country and wondered what happened. But it does, I mean, they even then told us that in interviews of, you know, well, my wife is from so-and-so, or I went to, in fact, actually, you could argue that the, the new commissioner of education is one of those. His wife went to Williams. They had always come back and visited friends, and he, you know, has an affinity for Massachusetts from that. So there, there's always that question as to whether or not we're going to pick up some of that too. What else? So the one thing I want to say about the paperwork that I gave you, the timeline is, is very sort of general. I will say that the, my question, if I came back to you. I will say that the, my question, if I came back to you with a timeline, one of my questions for you would be whether or not you wanted to try to land the plane before winter break. Sometimes we can manage to do that. Particularly since our, well, I shouldn't say it because our winters are milder, because that's just setting myself up. We do, I, I'm enough of a New Englander where we always try to leave a little bit of a leeway on, on some of this stuff, particularly as we're getting into the later part of the year. But that it is certainly possible to do a search where you've completed it by the holiday break. If you want to sort of get to the finalists and then come back and do that last part in January, that's also entirely doable. That one of the first things that I work through when I'm putting a timeline together specific to a district, of course, your own school calendar, you know, when are you starting? When are the students back? When are the teachers back? What breaks do you have along the way? And that gives me a little bit of a better idea of, and also one of your school committee meetings already. Cause if I can just sort of fit my reports back to you into meetings you already have, that makes it more simple for everyone. So don't, don't think, there's a reason why that's all highlighted. That's absolutely not written in stone. But it does give you an idea of sort of how I think about the, a search in terms of times.
So do you meet, when it says school committee meets with consultant, do you meet with the whole committee?
In a public session, I would ask to be on your agenda. Only when we, there, the only place at which I essentially need a whole meeting from you is once we get into interviews. Otherwise I can be added to a regular agenda of, you know, I'm presenting my report to you, I'm presenting the timeline to you, I'm presenting the report of this, of the, of the information gathering to you, when the finalists are announced, when you come up with questions for your interviews, that all I can do with that. And I mean, all of the, the scheduling in terms of finalists visiting and you going to them, that's all email.
Do you come here in person?
I prefer to, if, if you all would rather that I, you know, I'm online, that's fine. But I find that it, first of all, one of the, you know, people want to know what you're paying for. Secondly, I find it's useful to read rooms. I was a teacher before I did this and do have the teacher's habit of, of sort of, you know, who haven't we heard from lately and what does that body language actually say kind of thing? And of course, if you have other members of the public in the room, it's not just that I'm looking at responding to all of you, it's that you're responding to your public. So yes, I prefer to, I, I also find that it is useful. One of the things I really think is important when I'm doing the information gathering. So I will ask if I could give, be given time on faculty meetings at each of the schools. If I can meet directly with central administration that each, you know, and if I can do in-person, you know, evenings. Because I want to, I want to know your town and your district from all of those perspectives. Because one of the things I'm doing on kind of the other side is as it goes out that, you know, okay, so Islam Meadows is looking for a superintendent. One of the things that I'm going to get kind of on the other side to your question is people calling me and saying, oh, so tell me about Islam Meadow, who are thinking of applying? And I want to be well-informed from my perspective as to, you know, here's a lot of what I'm hearing, here's the good things that are going on. You know, what are the sort of rumblings you're going to be dealing with as the next superintendent? It's good to know that too, because part of what we're trying to do there too is match skill sets and experiences to what you have coming up, right? So that's part of what I'm also thinking when I'm having those conversations too. Besides, it's a pretty ride.
Do you meet with anyone from the town side?
It's, that's entirely up to you all. I'm always happy to, I certainly have experiences with doing that, meeting with select board, town administrator, happy to meet with FinCom. Sometimes I meet with public safety. But that's up to the school committee.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Tracy? Amy, you good out there?
I am, thank you.
Amy, you're the only one who didn't get my contact information, but it is on the screen. So, you know, make a note of it. So the one thing I'll leave you with, whatever you decide on this, remember that I am your field director. I'm always happy to take your questions on this or on anything. Samantha knows I try to be really good about answering both my email and my phone. If I can't get to my phone, I'll answer it via email. So that is something that you absolutely should sort of take away from this regardless of what you decide to do next.
One last question, I'm just curious, I know you said that you, that there's another district that you're already committed to working with. Do you feel that you would be able to be the one that would work with us?
Yes, two is fine. Once we start getting into three and four, then we start having to sort of have the field directors all compare their schedules to figure out who already has what, what night. And honestly, that really only starts to become complicated if we're running, say, for example, the semifinalist interviews happen to be overlapping in terms of their day. So that's another reason why I try to run out the timelines like this. So like, I can tell you, like, this is the timeline for Berlin Boylston, right? The first thing I'm going to do when I write up, write up a schedule for you are, is to see if I can manually just avoid that, you know? So if I'm doing screening one week and screening the next for you all. The other thing, of course, is you also will probably not run into this with them. You may find it a little bit more, I know there's something like eight districts west of the river who are looking for superintendents this fall. Is that, you know, as we start to get to the end, sometimes there are finalists who are finalists in more than one district. And like, the last thing I want to do is be doing sort of this race to the finish of who can appoint first. That's not the best way of making a decision. I understand the temptation, but try to avoid that too.
Set the schedule and set to, set with the schedule is what you're saying, don't.
So by the way, the, the timeline will actually go into the brochure, so the, the people who are applying have it too. Of, oh, they're going to be making this part of the decision at this time. And by the way, the other thing that we do as your field, as your search consultant is we take all of those phone calls and emails. We tell them, don't contact the school committee. So if they have like, did they choose this yet, or when are they doing it, or am I ever going to, like, that's all my problem, not yours. I know. Super, excellent.
Thank you, Tracy.
If you have any questions, let me know.
Awesome, thank you so much for coming tonight and the information.
Tracy, you okay finding your way back?
No, I, like I said, I taught high school before I did this, but it's always, it's always funny where, you know, it feels like a geography lesson or something.
A new building will be easier to maneuver.
Yes. No, you have yourselves an authentic historical like artifact.
Is that what you call it?
That was built in about the same time period.
They're all the same, right? Thank you, Tracy, have a good night. Thank you. Any further discussion on the topic? I mean, we can, go ahead.
So, well, my only question would be is, hearing that and knowing what I saw before.
Yeah.
Is it appropriate to make a decision? Or make a motion to, to bring her in or bring them in?
I think it's appropriate. I mean, I, going through the process once already, I would recommend it. Especially taking the burden off all of us and to have someone who does it on a professional basis, do it, help us with it. And MASC has been a great resource all the way through. So it would be them, or I think there's one or two other private entities out there.
That was going to be my question, like how many districts use MASC? And if they don't, you know, who are your other private entities? And, and I guess, you know, you do have to look at test rates.
The two that I see the most of are MASC, Nesdaq. We don't have a price quote from Nesdaq, but I do think we can certainly find this out for you, that they generally will run higher. That's, is that because we also pay a membership into, we pay a membership into this for, for this very, very purpose?
Where does the money come out of?
The budget.
System superintendent for business.
We were just reviewing, there, there is one line item, which is totally escaping my mind. Gordon, do you remember what we were talking about, it's about 22?
Right, that's where.
Yeah, that, that, from there, the alternative would be the school choice revolving account.
I thought it was the savings with the data dashboard. But I could be wrong on that.
Okay, I'll have to, but, but there, there is one, and as soon as I saw it, I said, that's perfect, because we need. Exactly. And they certainly seem extremely organized. But as you said, I mean, do you want to see the other?
I mean, I, I don't, my experience obviously is in the higher el, realm where there's like a handful of the same sort of search firms that people, and there is price differentials and certain firms that tend to be used for presidential and executive searches. And others might be used for director level type searches. And much like I think she referred to is that some of those private search firms have a pool of candidates that they're, you know, that they have a relationship with as well. But I was just curious in terms of like what it looks like on the landscape and then, you know, in terms of reach. You know, if, if there are multiple searches happening in this region, like, would there be some benefit of looking at? I don't know.
Just terms of advertising reach and getting candidates from different places, yeah. I mean, I, yeah, I don't know that they would differ from Nesdaq per se. I mean, I, I just thought the process went well last time and have a relationship with them already.
And we're voting on this tonight?
We don't have to.
I didn't know. Well, what is our timeframe as to when we should?
I think we should get going as soon as possible.
I think so too. I mean.
And she's proposing soon.
I think this is Boylston.
I would be supportive of moving forward with MASC. It seems like in the past, from what Greg is saying, obviously, we had a very successful search previous to this with bringing in Gordon. It seems like MASC is the gold standard for supporting superintendent searches in Massachusetts. So I'm, if others are, are feeling like we want to move forward on the sooner end, I, I would be in favor of moving forward with Tracy.
And, and I will only add, you know, again, participating or at least watching what we did in Springfield, it was a rough, it was a rough goal. But I will say that MASC was very straightforward. They, you know, they kept the ship moving and they kept the ship moving when it could have fallen apart at any given point. If, if we were doing it, they were doing it themselves, it would have, it would have been very rough, but they kept the ship moving.
So they used MASC?
Yes, yeah.
So, I mean, she's collecting all this data in the community and the schools. What is she doing with that data? Is it more of, and I probably should have asked her this, sorry. But is any of those, whatever data she finds going in the posting, like, how is that?
I thought she said she was going to bring the data to the school committee in a report.
You look at her, at the timeline?
Did say that, that it was, she was going to give us like a, some kind of report.
Correct.
So then, do we use that information for the posting?
Like, I think she said she would be using the information she gathered from the community, from other stakeholders to create the profile for our town that would ultimately be what attracts or doesn't attract any given candidate.
Yeah, she did say like the posting is the posting that.
Yeah, and I think it's also input for us to get from the community, stakeholders, in terms of what they are all looking for. So we're getting input from the community and so we can make our decision based partially on that as well.
And we still make the decision on what's in the post. We still are the ones that make the final decision before that post goes out.
We'll approve the post.
We approve the post.
Yeah, right.
So in the proposed timeline that I, I think this is for the group that is, she's already committed to, but in October, she'll have done, it looks like all.
Yeah, I think this is what she's purposes.
Okay, all right. I thought, I thought she had committed to these dates for the other one, but either way. So she'd be reporting back on what the focus group and survey responses were. Then you would look at your qualifications and selection criteria, and then you'd be looking at materials for advertising. I think that all leads into that. Another discussion. Folks want to wait, would we like to proceed? So I make a motion that we actually contract with MASC. Our super, new superintendent search, motion made by William. By Antonella, any other discussion? Okay, I'll get where motion, say aye. And that carries.
I said aye, yeah.
Five to zero. Great.
You will reach out and.
Contact them. We'll contact them tomorrow.
Okay, awesome, thank you, good discussion, great. Yeah, we're on our way. Now, filling that brand new office that nobody else is ever going to be. He designed it too.
Who's going to miss this office?
I am going to miss this office.
From the beach, he'll miss it. Okay, moving right along, thank you all on that. We have an update on the Islam Meadow High School building project.
Yay. Okay, hopefully you've all had a chance to see it live. You're coming through the building, you can see how it continues to change in the lot that they're currently paving, student parking lot is going to continue to change between now and Friday. But this is obviously where we began. That's a picture of our current building. And this is where we're going. And by this time next year, you at least will have that building and all the parking and different access loops coming up to the building in place. That's going to be a challenging schedule to get that second part to happen. And then the fields will continue, the grass fields that you see on the right side of the picture. That's going to happen over the next year, 26 to 27.
So this current building, it's in that parking lot right now?
Yeah, you'll, you'll take. Yeah, the building's here.
Yeah.
I think we have a picture there.
Oh yeah, so this is the backside.
So looking north, okay, so as though you were behind the new building. You see the new building going up and you see where our current building stands and the dirt area to the right there as of July 17th, so you can see how far they've come already with the asphalt. That's what they were doing in the student, what was the student parking lot, but it's also construction of tennis courts, new tennis courts. It's, you can see the pool over there in the right corner.
Where is it, that?
That's the pool.
That's the pool?
Yeah, there'll be slides.
And so by this time next year, this part of the building from the auditorium over will be knocked down. Here's the front door of the new building. So this part will still be here next year. It'll take another year to knock that down. This through next summer, by the end of, after the last day of school and before we open up, this whole part will be gone. This will be paved and then this leaves, if you can go on the next slide. You see that all that new parking lot goes away.
Wow.
The parking lot is going to go away and that becomes the entrance and then there'll be a parking lot here for the new building closure.
So you can see where they've been working, this is back on July 17th. Creating those new tennis courts over by St. Michael's, that parking lot, all the, down in the left corner is St. Michael's parking lot. And they're expanding that entrance off Maple down where students enter the parking lot. And starting to create that bus loop.
There'll be three lanes in that, two coming out, one coming in on this exit. Which will improve it, it's already built, yeah. And it comes right in here, so that the tennis courts are here, they're actually leveled off today and the lights are in for the tennis courts. And then they striped the field, they striped the lines for the parking lot today. And then the concession stand bathrooms, the building is up, it's my building.
Concession stand bathrooms. I know.
So this gives you just glimpses of what they're doing with the different sections of the building in terms of adding the vapor barrier and starting to mobilize masonry. More of that happening on A Wing. Adding plumbing underneath the slab. This is in the kitchen area.
It's important.
Yeah, it's good to have that. This is now starting to construct that main stairway in that central spine. Looking up, this is now the mason, starting to set up his staging. Interior framing. More interior framing plus electrical HVAC. So this is the pool, a, a close up of the pool.
So big.
Yeah, it's going to be.
All the half feet deep from the deck. It's a, it's it's three and a half, three feet wider than a normal pool. The pool committee decided to make it a little bit wider, so it's going to be the nicest pool around. It'll be awesome.
Oh, nice.
And that allows for that diving area, right? Cause they've made the lanes so that they can separate it out, if I remember correctly, because you have more space.
Well, the diving area, you gotta take the lanes out anyway.
Right, those two outer lane.
Oh, you can keep them, yeah.
And because of the. And because of the size, they're able to conduct like meets and things.
It's gonna be the nicest pool in West Mass.
Oh, former swimmer.
Nice.
I think the captain of his swim team.
For you.
Is this in a part, part of the swim team?
Tested the water.
The water.
Um, this, this gives you a look at the uh Mason contractor starting to uh work on the concessions building. Now, the tough part with the concessions building is it's going to be up as we get finished with this school year. But until this building is demolished, they can't connect the sewer. So we won't be using it until the fall of twenty six.
So two years.
Fall of twenty six, no year.
Year from now.
Yeah, year.
Year.
But it'll be up all this year.
See it, you'll, you'll see it.
Thanksgiving Day, it'll be there.
They'll see it. Nope, cause it won't be connected to sewer.
I know. Can't tell, we tried so hard to get it out.
So I know.
One more year.
Be a reminder of.
Make sure that we're letting folks know that.
Sign out, coming soon.
If they're gonna walk by it and they're gonna, well, why are we still using porta potties?
Yeah.
You know, um.
Yeah, we're not gonna do that, no, no.
The bathroom is not doing anything with it, because sewer won't be connected until this building gets dropped.
This whole conversation is going down the drain.
Yes, it is.
That's cool.
Um, so that gives you, uh, obviously, this has been updated as of today, cause they're striping out there and so forth. But you can see.
Now?
Uh, this actually, it's now, it has islands and parking spots and so forth. That happened between this picture being taken at the beginning of last week and now.
So that's the bus loop break or?
Right.
So the new school, yeah, it'll be there.
There's three lanes coming in there?
Coming in here.
Here, yeah, yeah. Two going out, one coming in, so they can go left and right and just leave the it's.
Have we communicated this to LP Doc?
I was just gonna.
I'm just, um, I'm thinking about.
We have to, but first we have to finalize this and then get that information out. I don't know if they're using this bus lane this year.
Yeah, I don't think we.
I don't think they are.
I think it's gonna stay the same because this is, it's still here.
That's what I thought.
Are still there.
That loop's not gonna change. They just needed to get this in so that they stay on schedule.
I just know.
Students will park over in the new lot.
Okay.
But buses are not gonna be operational over there.
And student information is forthcoming, I think, did I see that?
Yeah, so high school is awaiting um final information from Fontaine, so they can get it out to um all the high school community.
And the design is intentional in the parking lot. As you remember before, it used to be a wide open like racetrack.
Right.
And so all these islands are intentional to slow it all down.
Someone who's done parking lot duty.
It's like there's less parking.
Yeah.
Same amount of parking.
Oh.
Yep, same amount. It's gonna be a little harder to plow.
It'll be a little tighter and it'll be harder to plow. It, it won't be tight like the shops parking over in Long Meadow when they redid that. But it'll be, it won't be as wide open as it is right now.
Now it's just open.
Correct.
Or was, not anymore.
Lent itself over the years for people picking up speed as they're coming through the park.
I know, it was, it was dangerous before. And I, yeah, and I'm sure communication, they'll have folks that will help students get acclimated.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. First thing they'll get acclimated is they'll be walking a little bit further. Not that much further.
Helps with the wellness, yeah.
That's right. The staff got acclimated to that past year. Um, so this is hard to see, but I did want you to kind of see the, what we're starting to this year think about really um specifically. So the pink areas are areas that Fontaine would like to start abatement earlier than the end of the school year. And that area at the bottom is central office and Elcat. So if all things go well and we're trying to put those things into um place now, we're planning with them, we're, we're doing, uh, we started today an inventory of all materials in the school, desks and chairs and furniture and whatever else. Um, because we have to do some things um to stay within town policy and mass general law in terms of advertising, things that we feel can be salvaged. Um, and uh first area of that would be any desks and tables that the district can use. We will do so. Um, then it was suggested today that we advertise to other school districts. So if, you know, if another district is interested in, I don't know how many would be interested in our student desks, but if they are, they're here.
Do they pay you for it?
Uh, I think it would probably be more of a donation. Cause it, we have to move that out quickly.
Yeah.
Like, um, so anyway, getting back to um the pink area. If possible, we're hoping to possibly move Elcat Central Office and Student Support Services April break. We're just not sure where we're going.
Sure.
Yeah.
Like, where would you guys go?
Well, we're investigating, we're investigating, yeah. So there's a few things that we have to answer, but we're investigating spaces over at Birchland. We'd be separated out. Um, it would be probably much more of a bullpen type setting where you have multiple desks. Um, because Birchland will be in operation. And so they can't just give up all their spaces. But there is um one larger classroom that uh has been used as a maker space. Um, and it's um was originally set up as a computer room. They still have a computer room set up. So now they use it in a variety of ways. Um, we are looking for other town spaces.
Little Red Schoolhouse.
Little Red Schoolhouse, if that's a possibility. I do know that they use it for other things.
No one's using it. I mean, it's after school program.
Yeah, I think they do.
I mean, you could probably adjust it. There might be a little bit of overlap, but not.
Right, so we'd have to look into that and see. It is hopefully enough notice that maybe if people haven't reserved it through the entire year, then maybe we could block out April on. So these are all things that have been the.
There's options.
Yeah, the issue with, uh, Frank doesn't believe they give up the gym in April, so this gym is not a possibility. So it's whether or not what we can give up for abatement, cause once they start abatement, it's offline. They'll actually put a wall in between the people and the bait, baited spot. So the uh Fontaine has to decide if we can give them enough space to actually start that abatement in April. If it's worth bringing in the abaters or if it's worth waiting till the last day and just bringing in a huge crew. As you can see, this is their timeline, this, this comes in four days, uh, four um, four days later than this. I mean, so they're gonna abate pretty quickly.
But if we wait till June, just so everybody, it's very transparent, there's a huge undertaking that has to happen very quickly.
Yeah.
Well, so this year, that parking lot that we were just talking about, that took from the last day of school and they're just finishing this week before school starts next year, they're gonna have to do the same thing with that parking where this building is with the loop and knock down half this building within the summer before the first.
So they have to create those two loops. They have one created. Uh, they have to create the other loop and they have to finish all parking for staff.
This is where the parking lot is now, that temporary one is out here.
Right.
And that, so now we have the horseshoe that comes out in two, one entrance, one exit. It'll be centralized in the middle directly across from, what's that street? Um, Brook, no, uh.
Bellwood.
Bellwood. So the exit entrance and then it'll split.
So how is this impacting sports this year?
Yeah, we're, Mr. McGee, the athletic director for the high school, is constantly working to schedule, coordinate and work with neighboring um towns to.
Because none of these will be online until twenty seven. This is where the existing building is. We do have the one field, this soccer field out here. We have the baseball field out back and we have the turf, so we have just the three now.
Right, so, and we can't do the gym in April, right?
They may take the small gym. We have to see if we can reschedule programming there. And then uh the pool generally, we're finished with it in April. However, the town has been using it, so we have to coordinate that too. So there are a few things going on. They need to be determined.
Alright.
Jamie's been unbelievable. She volunteered to float. I don't know what that looks like for the Elcat offices, but uh.
And speaking of Jamie, she has a, our uh Elcat video up online if anyone wants to check out a tour of the building. Uh, we did it a few months ago. Definitely we're checking out.
Doesn't even look like that yet.
We're gonna do, so we're gonna do, we're gonna do another one next month. That one's coming.
Put this um up, I can put this up in, in the news on the webpage.
It looks so nice.
Gonna be really.
Even like. Done yet, but it's hard to believe that in a year. Yeah.
It's even harder to believe what they're asking us to do this year. Because that's gonna be.
Thank you.
Um, but I have, I can't say enough about uh our partners in this in terms of our owner project manager, Skanska, they're really helping us, you know, they kicked us off today with the inventory. We're basically going room to room. Um, after a bunch of um work this summer with our custodial staff and IT department to recycle a bunch of electronics that are not being used and been in store rooms for a long time and um recycling other things that we've been pulling out of closets, but now we're down to items that are being used. And so we have to inventory that and uh make sure that we're going through the proper channels.
And we wanna float the uh schedule idea yet or no?
Um, it's, I, I did alert uh both union co-presidents. You know, they're certainly willing to discuss, uh, so that's up to you. Uh, you know, they're, they know that it's gonna be a discussion and it would have to be an MOU.
Right, so, so as we spoke, the timeline is super close for next summer. Um, Fontaine and others had asked if we could make it as early as possible, so we talked about the snow days and potentially putting any snow days that we had to take into the April break to make them up so that that June twelfth date.
Just for the high school.
Just for the high school.
That, that part didn't go over too well.
Right, so now we're, the idea has come that perhaps we push the first day of school till after Labor Day and get the week on that end. So we can give them one more week, Fontaine, and do that district wide, so that everybody's on the same schedule, just for one year. And um, and then next year go back. So nothing to decide today, but just kinda wanna float that idea. We would have to talk to um the teachers, unit A, because in their contract has a, a lot of those dates uh set already, so it would have to be an MOU. A memorandum of understanding um to do that. So just a thought, because as we said, that, that timeline's so tight.
And, and one of the things that um was important in my discussions with the, the co-presidents today. This uh kitchen sets up every building. So if, if that's not functioning to the utmost of its capability, you're impacting lunch in every building. So that's something that we have to.
Yeah, and so we had part of discussion on that because the kitchen, we may try to close early, because if we can sell the kitchen equipment, which we have to legally put out for, you know, certain processes to get rid of it. Um, again, they would want it gone literally the day uh school ends. Um, so we'd have to auction it, get it ready to go, and we may coordinate cold lunch that last day of school, that full day or something. We'll set the order.
Right.
So we have some planning to do with uh food services to make sure that they're, yeah.
Right, cause these are just brand new discussions that.
Just, yeah, that's just, that discussion literally happened this afternoon.
Like Lori Paul doesn't even know yet the food service.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, the break is difficult to do late, like that, they've already planned.
Well, yeah.
Contracted to teach and they have something else going on. And I think lots of folks might like school starting after.
Labor Day.
Labor Day might be hard to make.
The reason why we always go back, I'm sure you know, is that it gets super hot in June. And so if we don't go back before Labor Day, we're stuck here till mid-June and that's when
Yeah.
it can be a hundred.
And for instance, Agawam contractually always starts after Labor Day.
Right, I was gonna say.
Yeah, last day of school this year, where Labor Day's early, is June eighteenth.
Yeah.
So, you know, depending on what that discussion looks like, next year, Labor Day falls on the seventh, I believe. So, but what you could do is you could discuss and think about bringing teachers back and get your professional development in prior to Labor Day.
Right.
Go through the Labor Day, um, holiday and weekend, and then maybe come back on the eighth. So, so you lose, you know, roughly three school days from where you used to begin, students. But it's not putting you out at like June twenty fifth necessarily.
So we'll check with all the stakeholders on the feasibility of all those things and then we will bring that back for a discussion of this committee as a possibility.
And I think they're gonna discuss it in their executive, with their executive board. But there are districts across the Commonwealth that start, still start after this day. Absolutely.
So we wouldn't be an outlier there.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Gordon, for the update on that. Moving along, Assistant Superintendent for Business Report, we have the FY twenty five end of year transfers.
Uh, so thank you. So in your packet, you'll see the end of year transfers. Uh, just as a reminder, this year, uh, we did mid-year transfers. Uh, due to the challenges that we were having mid-year, we wanted to make sure that we had uh you know, salaries covered, et cetera. So um now this is the end of the year and you'll see uh, we have um transfer from legal services, uh, the unit A, which is the teachers, medical therapeutic, uh, copiers, general supplies and the custodial supplies. I think those were all lines that we talked about throughout the year. That total was a hundred and fifty eight thousand, seven hundred eight dollars collectively. And the funds went to the substitute line of thirteen thousand, sixty one dollars and added district, added district tuition of a hundred and forty five thousand, six forty seven, which again, we've talked about throughout the year, um, special ed. Uh, we made some uh revisions for this current budget that we're in uh to increase the special ed uh operating budget line. So uh we are in definitely a better place uh this year. Um, so I just need the school committee to officially uh approve the end of year transfers here. And at the next meeting, I will have the um fourth quarter uh financial report for you for ending the, the fiscal year. The town just closed the year like two, two weeks ago officially.
This is a.
They turned back two and a half million dollars.
Well, I think we turned back seventeen dollars and ninety one cents. I know, but I'm telling you what we did. As a, I'll have that official number.
Don't.
Yeah, two weeks from now, I'll have the end of year, I mean, the financial report for you.
You should be sitting here answering.
Yes, I should. Amy, Amy. Um, I'd like to approve the fiscal year twenty five end of year transfers as presented.
Motion made by Antonella, second by William. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, goes nay. Motion carries five to zero. Okay, let's see, we have the E-leaf grant. Good news here, acceptance of the twenty five, twenty six grant. See recipient, check.
Exciting to bring forward and we always wanna thank uh E-leaf, that's the East Line Meadow Educational Endowment Fund. Um, the amount that they uh gave this year in grants is total of fifty thousand, one three seven point four nine. So I always need the school committee to officially accept that, but I always like to list out ants that folks did get, cause I think it's very important they take the time to do that and that E-leaf does go through these, um, along with the administration at the schools. Uh, to do some great things out there for the school. So Alex Lennon, um, which is at Mountain View, a teacher whiteboard, tables and supplies, and that's one thousand, two hundred thirty four dollars, ninety cents. Christopher Tyler, um, eighty-five inch active panel, ten Promethean boards and supplies, that's at Mountain View. Four thousand, sixty eight dollars. The next one, uh, Christie Parsi, Parsi Ali, I hope I'm pronouncing correctly. If I don't, I apologize. Thank you, Parsi Ali. Laptop charging carts, uh, Mountain View School, five thousand, ninety seven dollars. Daniel Larkin, uh, JBL microphone and system, that's at Maple Shade School, three hundred eighty nine dollars, ninety cents. Erin Ty, musical instruments and supplies, and that's for Maple Shade School. She did let me know that it wasn't both schools this year. Somehow that's a typo. It is just Maple Shade and that's uh in the, the last year, I believe she did it for both schools, but this year it was just for uh Maple Shade. That's fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, Gary Wright, uh, slim, sublimation printer and heat press for the high school, that's forty three hundred dollars. Hillary Coughlin, eighty-six inch active panel, ten Promethean, uh, Mountain View School, twelve thousand, two hundred four dollars. Uh, Mackenzie Palini, adaptive tricycles for all the schools, and that's five thousand, six hundred fifty dollars, sixty nine cents. Peter Van Buren, uh, drone and robotics kits with equipment for the high school, eight thousand, two hundred eighteen dollars. Suzanne Collins, uh, micro bit ten pack, uh, Birchland Park, uh, twelve hundred dollars. Suzanne Collins, Deco Digital Drawing Tablets, Birchland Park, twenty four hundred dollars. Suzanne Thomas, Scholastic New Subscription at Meadowbrook, three thousand, eight hundred seventy. Suzanne Thomas, Scholastic New Subscription at Meadowbrook, $3,875. And that's the final one, again, for the grand total of $50,137.49.
To accept the '25-'26 grants, check from ELEAF in the amount of $50,137.49.
Motion made by Antonella, second by William, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, nay. That carries five to zero.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
You.
Yes, thank you.
Their community too. We really need to attend these events and.
Yep.
So.
Good stuff. Okay, up next, a new business waiver for policy GCGA substitute teacher information.
In your package, you have, um, the GCGA dash R substitute teacher information, which sets the parameters both for daily pay for substitutes, but also if a school is being a long-term substitute for a series of, um, weeks or months, uh, it indicates how that, um, progresses from a daily wage to, um, eventually becoming bachelor step one. The high school has a, a long-term substitution in, um, chemistry, and, uh, they were, they are asking or requesting a waiver of the, uh, 30-day consecutive day, um, daily rate before moving into bachelor. Historically, uh, I think at least in my tenure, this has come up, uh, a handful of times, specifically with science positions where it's more challenging to get licensed candidates, and, um, maybe one time in math.
Okay. Questions, motion?
Make a motion to approve the waiver of policy GCGA. Our substitute teacher information as presented.
Sure, I'll take it. Motion made by Antonella, second by William. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Five to zero.
Yes, very much so. Let the high school know.
Up next, we have a, a revision in the wellness policy.
Okay, also in your package, you have two copies of the wellness policy. The original wellness policy and now a revised wellness policy. The originally Health Advisory Committee started working a year ago, um, actually a year and a half ago, with a consultant from DESI, to revise our wellness policy and make sure that we were up to date with current regulation and current law. One of the things that as the Health Advisory Council, uh, became the Wellness Committee, which is one of the big changes, um, it was nice to see that our policy was pretty thorough and, uh, the DESI consultant was impressed. And, um, you can see in the highlighted areas where we've made changes. But it's, it's really around things such as making the name change, um, making sure that our areas where we're in compliance with national guidelines, if those have been revised, that we've made the updates there, and, um, I don't know what the new superintendent or how the, the person will feel, but all of a sudden I became co-chair. So it used to be the chair, the co-chairs of the Health Advisory Council, um, were both the health administrator, which is still true, uh, and the department chair for the health department. But in this case, uh, if you notice that, uh, the superintendent is co-chairing this.
Twenty minutes a day.
Minutes a day for.
Month.
Uh, they actually, uh, see twenty-five in most cases, and maybe a few minutes more. The elementary school, uh, I believe it was twenty-five, and then they go out to recess from there. Uh, generally they're, because they know they're going out to recess, they might be finished in fifteen. The longest part of, uh, I think those fifteen minutes is just getting the lunch. Consuming it goes rather rapidly.
I did see daily recess, I'll, I'm, elementary, have at least twelve minutes of recess. We have more than that, don't we?
We do, yeah, yeah. We're, we're generally fifteen to twenty minutes.
Yeah.
Uh, if not more.
Having had recess duty in winter, it felt like.
Yeah.
Like more than twelve minutes.
Twelve minutes was generally, uh, it's settling, they, they've locked, um, lunch because of the contractual lunch timeframe, and then also preparation time, so they've at least gotten a portion of preparation time backed up to lunch, which allows at the elementary school for the lunch and, uh, recess.
Yeah, I mean, not to belabor the discussion, but I think particularly in K through two, like twelve minutes of recess, I know that that's the state standard, seems like not enough time.
Yes, I, I think.
Movement.
Yeah, no, I think, uh, most staff in the building would agree with you.
Yeah.
That's why. The one thing that we are looking at more is, uh, you know, how many double recess or second recesses are being taken. So that is something that the Wellness Committee will talk about a little. As we totally agree with the, um, longer recess, but second recess, you know, is that something that's really needed? Given day, possibly. Every day, not so much.
Okay, any questions, discussion on the. I would take the motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised wellness policy.
Made by Antonella. Second, second by William. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. That carries five to zero.
Thank you very much.
You.
Wellness committee, thanks you.
And finally, for this evening, we have a reorganization of school committee roles. You'll all see that in.
Um, one thing that I would add, we do on here have, um, two committees that really no longer meet. Let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six down, the Health Protection and Service Advisory. That really was a committee that was established prior to us going into that year, um, that we had boat learning and then hybrid learning and then in-person learning during COVID. Um, the committee worked, uh, incredibly hard to put together different things during that year, and then for the subsequent years, or at least, uh, two more years, as if you remember, we weren't out of it fully probably for three school years in terms of just different things we were doing. However, since then, that committee has not met. And then, um, we've kept transportation on there, but we haven't, um, run our buses and employed bus drivers now since 2017. So we could probably.
Get rid of that one, too. Great.
Um, the other one that Pam found out about is, uh, the LPVEC for the Board of Directors and for the corporation, uh, we cannot have the same representative for both.
Yeah, you can.
So, uh, William, would you like to move over to Board of Directors? Is that your hope?
Uh, yeah, my hope was to, to fill your role, so the.
Happy to give it to you.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll keep you on the Board of Directors, so then we will need someone to do corporations. And that meets every three months, William? Is that what's there?
Yeah, it was every, yeah.
And versus the, uh, Board of Directors, just every month.
Right.
And you have a meeting, uh, coming up.
And they do them in person. I don't believe that they're.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Wednesday.
Right, so that one, and then I don't think I saw, I only saw like two on the schedule for the, for the, um, corporation.
Yeah, so it's, you probably aren't getting these from Phyllis yet for the.
Send me a, I, I'm going off the calendar, she sent me, she sent me.
Right, but she just sent out the agenda for August 20th. You haven't gotten that, but I'll, I'll forward this to you, and then can you get back to her whether you can make it or not, because she likes to know if there's a quorum.
What's the date?
Uh, it's Wednesday, the 20th.
Oh, yeah, I was, I was planning on doing that one, because I saw that on my catalog.
Great. Great. I'll send it to you. It's at, uh, six o'clock.
Yep.
Okay, so that being said, uh, we have spots to fill for my friend Sarah, who's no longer on our, with us, on our committee at least. Sarah's out there, I believe. Hi, Sarah. I think I see your name. Is that Sarah's name, Jamie? Thank you. Hi, Sarah. She can't answer that. Uh, so we have to fill, uh, warrant review, we have to fill corporation for LPVEC, we have to fill Unit A rep, which won't meet again for another year plus. Uh, we have to school, fill Safe Schools, ELEA, uh, the Collaborative Committee, and the Diversity Equity Steering. So with that said, are there any other committees that, I know we reorganized not long ago, are there any other committees? And I'm not trying to open a can of worms here, that anybody wants to give up or potentially slide into before we throw them all on our new friend?
Carrie.
I can go back on the warrant. I don't think I'm on that.
Okay. Yeah, and that tends to float anyway. I think anyone who comes, but that's fine. Thank you, Amy.
I can get, I can make sure I'm more consistent for sure with that.
She's like, I can do the warrant.
No.
Last week anyway.
Oh, come on.
I know. You're not here, we can pick on you.
You totally can.
Um, okay, so Amy's on for that one. Uh, how about the corporation? Same thing on the corporation, Amy? Push it down.
Um, how about, I'll do the collaborative. No, wait, what's the one? The other one that meets. Oh, come on, I can't, I, no, I'm so, I'm afraid that if I overcommit to things, especially that take me out of town during the weekday evenings, I'm, I just don't want to let the rest of this committee down. I don't want to overcommit. I'm so sorry.
Carrie, is there any chance you want to commit to that or?
It's, it's every three months, and unless, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to do it.
Oh.
Yeah.
Wow, great.
I know, that is great.
Thank you.
There'll be another time where I won't be happy to do something.
But it's not today. Um, okay, moving right along, we have Unit A rep. Like I said, this will not probably meet, uh, for at least another year.
Sounds perfect for me.
All right. Carrie's on it then. Uh, Safe Schools.
I could do it.
Okay.
And that one doesn't meet often. Um, that's really if, if we're making a significant change in our, um, safety and crisis plans, um, or if there's a new regulation that comes down, obviously it makes sense to have school committee members review it before bringing it to the full committee.
Okay, open it to Noah there. Uh, here is, uh, the Collaborative Committee that meets at seven in the morning. Is there a day of the week specifically it's on?
Um, it has been falling on Wednesdays, but we're not necessarily set on that.
I can do it.
I was waiting for you, Amy.
Yeah, I can do it.
Everybody's good with that? All right, you got it, Amy.
I can't, we can't do that.
You can do it, yeah.
And the Diversity Equity would be the final one. Amy's on it already.
And that's been.
Me. Right.
Yeah.
I can have it, yep.
Okay, perfect.
That's been meeting, um, generally will start up somewhere in November, and we've been trying to keep it as, um, monthly as possible. Um, and that usually is at night. We've been starting around six, and we try to keep it between, say, an hour and an hour and a half.
And new committee, I'll get looped in to when these meetings are.
Yes.
Ever, okay.
Sure. Um, we'll let, uh, a fiber know, a PDCC.
Yes, yeah, we have to let Phyllis know.
Both Carrie and William, Samantha.
Yeah, William's already, to tell her that.
Yes, well, William was on the.
Take him on.
Switch, and then, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. If there's no other discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve new reorganization of this. Motion made by Antonella, second by William, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. And with that, we have come to the conclusion of our meeting. If there's no other business in front of us, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Come on, Cosmo.
Hold on.
Oh, so moved.
Motion made by Carrie.
Yes.
Second.
Maybe now you're a motion maker. Maybe by Carrie, seconded by Antonella. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. Thank you, Amy and Heather, for zooming in tonight. Thank you, Jamie, running the show, and, uh.
All right.